Good evening, I'm going to open up the workshop meeting of the city council. First item on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing the Asbury Park Music Foundation.
Let's go guys.
You going down?
Yes.
Of course we do it all the time.
We support you. Come on up.
And promoting Asbury Park's focus musical heritage, past, present, and future. They sought to contribute to the city's revitalization by ensuring that Asbury Park become a musical destination for all. And whereas the mission of the Asbury Park Music Foundation is to keep Asbury Park's music legacy alive by providing underserved youth with life-changing musical education, helping the local music scene thrive, and uniting a diverse community through music. And whereas it is the organization's vision that its community-wide inclusive and collaborative effort will make Asbury Park a premier music destination whose economic and cultural vitality benefits all citizens and reflects the diversity of its population. And whereas Asbury Park Music Foundation's effort expanded in 2013 to include programs that would focus on the future of music in Asbury Park and birth music's take my life. The youth initiative program was established in collaboration with Lake House Music Academy. And whereas the program was originated to address the need for music programs at both academy charter schools and had now expanded to multiple in-school and after-school programs and scholarships as well. And whereas the organization initiatives segwayed to the Asbury Park Music and Film Festival in 2015, the always well-attended three-day festival helps to ensure the financial stability of their youth programs. And whereas in 2016, the organization's efforts of partnership expanded to include a live evening concert series at Springwood Park on the city's west side on Mondays, and the First Avenue Green Space on Wednesdays, and performances by the Asbury Park Concert Band on the boardwalk Thursday. And whereas this September, the organization will expand once again to exhibit and promote Asbury Park's hip-hop scene and local artists through its suburban event program. Now therefore be resolved that Mayor Moore and the Asbury Park City Council acknowledge and thank the Asbury Park Music Foundation for its contributions and efforts to the history and preservation of Asbury Park's youth, its diversely unique music scene, and making Asbury Park a musical destination for many years to come.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I would like to say something. I'd like to thank Mayor Moore and the council here to know every single one of you because you've come to the last two seasons with your fashions and your lawn chairs and your dancing shoes. And you've made yourself known throughout the community. And I personally, I started almost two years ago. And so this was my second season, and I love going to that park. It's a beautiful thing that happens. Asbury Park, yes, it's right. They know how to do it right. It's for ten, ten weeks, two hours on a Monday. People from all over the city go over to that park. And they're just meeting their neighbors and having a good time. All through the parks and love the music. Some of the community members I've come to know, the neighborhood, the people of the neighborhood, and they say it's the only thing that they look forward to all year. They're so excited, and it's the only live entertainment they get besides church, besides church music. So that means a lot, being a participant. So I want to thank everybody here for their support. Patrick Dorrin, each of their neighbors, Colleen Tembley, all of our sponsors, Madison Marquette, Andrew Virgil, yes, Asbury Park Press, everybody, and especially the city of Asbury Park. Thank you.
I just want to just say that I agree with everything she said. And we enjoy our performance on Thursday night on the boardwalk next to the Coons. So thank you very much for your support and your dedication to keeping the youngsters involved in the programs. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Dorian, I forgot to caution you.
Well, it's been a long time since we actually sat in a room and planned for this was only an exhibit. And we came out of that public exhibit, which was very successful in the fact that music was really going to be the thing that the city was all, woke up, the light bulb came on, and we decided that we were going to put our focus that way. And our focus was really trying to promote and let people know that music, that the city had a rich heritage, but at the same time, music was still here, and it was difficult. It was very difficult. And slowly, we had some movement going on, and that was our focus. We wrote a book, we did a lot of great things. But one day, John Lederstorf came to us and said that he had an opportunity to create or to give some music lessons to some children in the city that couldn't afford to do it. We had something left over from that big event that we did, and we gave it to John. And we witnessed amazing transition in these children just from the fact that they were able to have that opportunity to do that. Ironically, our whole focus, our whole focus, but a good chunk of our focus right now is on taking care of the children, which is a very rewarding thing. And it's just amazing to see these kids, once they had an opportunity, how they learned and how they succeed and how everything else in their life all of a sudden starts to get better and anything like that. And I will tell you, I think we succeeded as far as getting music back on track here in the city. I think music today is better than it's ever been. Really, all the young bands want to play here again. All the young kids come to see those bands again. And they behave themselves somewhat. It's a good thing. But in any event, the city's in great shape, and I believe that music is really what the catalyst of young.
And now me. Thank you. I'm going to just do one more.
Thank you. I'm going to shoot somebody.
Just checking this. Okay, we'll move on to city manager's report and issues raised at prior meetings.
At the prior meeting, there was a request from a resident if there was a signed permit for a property across the street. There was not, a summons was issued, and so the summons was dismissed by the court. We don't know why yet, we're still looking into it, but that's all I have right now.
Special events applications, Alicia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First application is for the Illumination Gathering, which will be held in senior park on October 13th. Next is the volleyball tournament, to be held on August 3rd. And I would just ask the council to approve the August dates at this point for that particular event, for the volleyball tournament, not the September dates as we have. Next is the Fall Harvest Festival, which will be held in Kennedy Park on October 20th. Halloweener Walk in Sunset Park on October 14th. The Second Angel Truck or Treat on Halloween 31st will be held here in the parking lot again. And Allen Chapel Church would like to do a baptism on October 6th. The Columbus State Reenactment will happen on October 7th, Fifth Avenue, Boardwalk, and Beach. And lastly, the Homecoming Parade would happen on October 5th. Are there any questions?
That's the Asbury Park High School.
I'm sorry?
Asbury Park High School.
Right.
Celebrate there, and it starts here.
Yes, starts here at City Ball.
At 4:30.
About four o'clock.
Four o'clock. I'll check the website. Don't even ask what I said. Alicia, the volleyball, what we wear?
The, I'm sorry?
Volleyball.
Volleyball, it's going to be on the beach. It's a tournament, Gilly tournament that happens over here on the beach.
Review of agenda items for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Madam clerk. I would like to add an item to the consent agenda about painting crosswalks for LBBT History Month. I forgot to include it at the, when we were doing the agenda. So I'd like that to be listed under consent. Additional consent is...
Walk or walks?
Walk.
Okay. Thank you.
The consent agenda items is special events application and accreditation to our county. Is there any questions on those? Moving on to the individual resolutions. 345 is to change the bills. 346 is the See Here Now Festival's addendum. It clarifies that the permits are part, permit fees were part of the original application. 347 extends summer parking hours for the festival. And then 348 is awarding a contract installation of playground equipment at the Atkins Avenue Playground. This project has been in the works for about a year. We're waiting for the CDVG money. There should be the next meeting, we hope, a second resolution authorizing the purchase of a new gazebo for that area. A gazebo that we have now is going to downwind public works at some point in time. Moving on to ordinance, ordinances for introduction. We're going to ask you to table 2018-37's sleeping in public places. We continue some legal research on that. And resolution, ordinance for introduction, 2018-45 is drug-free zone. We've updated this map for the first time in seven or eight years. It's supposed to be updated every time there's a new school or public place added. This map is current and done by T and M. By law, it gets filed at the city clerk's office. For second reading, ordinance 2018-21 is a development fee. We're going to ask that to be tabled. Ordnance 2018-34 is pending the release of food balloons. Resolution 2018-35 changes the time of that to conform with the state. And then, are we tabling 2018-36 or should I be taking it? 2018-36 amends the begging and hand handling ordinance. 2018-38 is traffic regulations. Hold on for a second. What? The boys and girls, a parking, no parking, so thank you. 39 is various articles and sections of the Code of Asbury Park. We're going to ask you to table this at this time so we can incorporate what the planning department recommended. And that will be before you again at the next meeting. 40 is an update to the Property Maintenance Code. This is, as the code was last adopted a year ago, this is suggestions that we've heard from the public and from what you've heard to this amends the property maintenance code. Resolution 2018-41 is bond ordinance authorizing $175,000 for the parking, for, through the parking utility for installations of license plate readers and associated software. There is no event here as of yet, but we anticipate that shortly. And that is done by resolutions, it'll be at the next meeting or two. And 2018-42, which is plastic bags, we are asking you to table. Is there any questions?
Now move on to matters by city council.
I don't have anything at this time.
A couple of items. On Thursday, October 11th, at the Asbury Park Senior Center at 1201 Springwood Avenue, there is going to be the second public meeting to discuss our affordable housing plan for Asbury Park. All are invited. It starts at 6:00 PM, and we really hope you'll come out and pay part in this discussion. Second item is there is a new CDVG home repair program. And this home repair program allows individuals and homeowners who have meet the requirements for income to get $5,000 to repair certain items in their home or around their home. And this money does not have to be paid back. It does not result in a lien on your property. If you want more information, you can either talk to Carrie Geno or Cassandra Dickerson.
Well, I think Alicia had said what I was supposed to say. And I think you about the Asbury Park Homecoming, that'd be August 6th at, I would say 4:00 or 4:30. Okay. Also, she mentioned the holiday truck or treat for Halloween. And we would ask you, if you'd like to donate candy, please see Alicia, and you can drop it off at at the municipal building. Thank you. That's it?
Just a little bit more on the new program that Yvonne talked about as far as through CDVG money. It is new, and it's starting off with a fairly small budget. So if anybody's looking to apply for this, I would say do not hesitate. Get in there and get your applications in quick. It's up to $5,000. There's not been an entire $5,000 spent. Since we don't have that much money left over in CDVG, it is a limited resource. So the first one to apply, to get approved, is going to get the money, and the rest will be next year, hopefully. Today, at the senior center, there was a wonderful event, the Mayor's Wellness Committee. And there was all types of people there, different givers from the state as far as eye exams, blood pressure, glucose. It was very well attended, and everybody had a great time, and we had a healthy meal. And it was very good. And I got to thank Mike Manziel. Mike Manziel is the chairperson of the Mayor's Wellness Committee. He did an outstanding job. And name a couple of names who should be thanked.
Hey, I'm John Martin from Coral Harbor.
Okay. Name a couple more.
Some of the people, Elaine Downey. They brought the eye screening, eye screening from the state. Atkins that guardian had health screenings.
And then home drugs, home drug was there. And it was excellent. And again, it started off a little bit slow because I think people were scared to get up and go around. But once they got up, they started going table to table and finding out the literature and everything, and then started to get their eye, there was two different eye tests. Front of your eyes, then behind your eyes, which you get the results the doctor's going to send in a week or so. It was just, it was a wonderful event. I got to say hello to all the ladies and gentlemen there because all they said is like, "We watch you on AP-TV all the time." And it was nice that the coaster showed up and took pictures, which will be either in tomorrow's, if not next week. So again, Michael, thank you so very, very much for putting that on. That's all I have. Thank you.
Managed by a city manager? Managed by a city attorney?
The only thing I would mention is that, as councils aware, this weekend is the See Here Now Festival at the waterfront. And just for the benefit of the public, if any members of the public have any questions about the workings of the event, whether it be traffic flow or anything at all, they should contact the City Mayor's Office.
Or go to our website, or go to the See Here and Now website, and we'll get a complete list of street closings and everything else. And it's all up there. So, any questions? No problem?
Okay, if not, we'll adjourn until seven o'clock. Good evening, I'm going to open up the regular meeting of the city council. I'm going to do roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer, moment of reflection, please. Flags salute, applaud allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 4th, 2018, post-syllable bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. This time, can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please?
Move it.
Second. Anybody who wishes to speak, please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Each member of the public has three minutes to speak.
Good evening, my name is Reverend Gilbert Caldwell. I live at 1501 Ocean Avenue in Asbury Park. I want to say this also, I'm here because I guess my claim to fame is that I'm a civil rights veteran. I'm 84, and I want someone who's a bit younger to introduce herself.
My name is Mylea Estes. I live at 910 Fifth Avenue at Asbury Park. And I'm here because I thought that it would be a great opportunity to lend my voice to something like this.
And I find myself wanting to quote someone. George Santayana said that he or they who do not remember their history are likely to repeat it. And I guess, Mylea, I want to say a couple of things that sort of enable you to talk about voting. Because as I look at my history, there are a couple of things that I remember very well, and voting changed them. When I was in college, I came to Atlantic City to work in restaurants and hotels. And in the 50s, I worked at hotels where I could not sleep, and restaurants where I could not be a customer. But somehow, because of American democracy, that was changed, and voters had a lot to do with that. And then I would say that when I was active in the civil rights movement with Martin King, I remember this very well, where some young people who were eligible to vote marched to the courthouse to vote, and each of them carried flags in their hands, and the police jerked the flags out of their hands, and therefore they could not vote. The great thing then about voting is that somehow, the significant thing about democracy is that we, the people, can make a difference. And I guess I'd like to hear how you say that as a young person.
Well, I personally think that it's very important to vote because I feel like it's very important that we're involved in what goes on in, it's a topic that's a high, in our country and even in our local areas, and that we have a voice in the decisions that happen because it's where we live. So we should have some say in the things that go on. And I think that it's especially important that people from my generation register to vote and get out there because we need to get our voices out there the same as everybody. And we need to realize the importance of going out and voting for what we think should happen.
Okay, and since I am so old and you are so young, the council has given us about 30 minutes to speak. We'll take advantage of that. I've got some questions that some people get hung up on, and I think I'll, may I question you?
Sure.
And if you answer them all correctly, the council will give you $50 or something like that. Some people asked this question, do you have to be male to vote?
No.
That's M-A-L-E, not M-E-I-L.
I think it'd be difficult to be hostile. Uh, no.
Oh my goodness, we make a good team. Let's go on the road. Do you have to own property?
No.
Do you have to be white?
No.
Do you have to pay a poll tax?
No.
Do you have to pass a test?
No.
Oh, that's great. Wasn't she great? Let's applaud her, please. I guess before she makes a kind of announcement about voting, I want to make a presentation to her. Some of you know that, of course, I had a relationship with Martin King. And so I like to share this picture with people. Ralph Abernathy's in the middle, Martin King is on the right. And because I'm there on the left, I put my name there because you need to know who I am. So I wanted to give that to you.
Thank you.
And then I think you want to say something about voting or something that sort of, right?
Yes, I am lucky for...
Oh, you've got a paper.
Just a little bit. I just wanted to remind you that Election Day is November 6th, and the polls are open from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And the voter registration deadline is October 16th this year. And I want to encourage everyone to get out there and vote because, like I said, it's really important that we all get out there and do this for the good of everybody, so.
Anything else you want to say?
Um, no.
Thanks, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of tough one to follow after that one, but need to be the bear of doom and gloom here, following that right there. But I have some, Christian, first Avenue, phone one first. I got some quality of life issues that I want to address, and I think we'd all agree, we're all here because we care about this town. The first one is I just want to bring up that something was tabled the last meeting, maybe you can just kind of educate me what that means. 2018-37 about sleeping in public places, is that something that's permanently gone? Or is that something that's going to come back, and you guys are tweaking it right now?
Go ahead.
Do you want me to answer now or wait until you finish this?
Do you have other questions?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yes, all your questions, then we'll hear.
That's the first one. Two other things that I think should be important in this town that other cities, you know, enforce. Digging through trash. I go out to work every morning, and there's someone in my garbage can pulling stuff out. The way things are these days, you have identity theft, and you know, there's a lot of sensitive information. People's trash, it's not trash. I have also found stuff of mine a few blocks away. People pull out of the trash, and then they just kind of throw it somewhere else, and they realize it means, you know, nothing to them. So I think it should be enforced. Las Vegas does it. Lebanon, Pennsylvania does it. It's something that, you know, it's kind of odd. I don't want to go out to work in the morning and have someone digging through my garbage. It's unsettling. And it's not abandoned. I'm not abandoning my garbage. It's there for the garbage men to take. So I think that's something that should be enforced. Second thing is couches and mattresses on front porches and on front yards. I think that's something that should be more enforced. I don't know if there's an ordinance on books for that, but it's just upsetting. There's a house, four houses down, that's got two couches on the front porch. Looks horrible. And you don't want to see that in your town. So I think that that's two things that need to be brought up and addressed. And maybe there's an ordinance you guys can draw up. Maybe there's something on the books where it's not enforced, but, you know, and there's people that have just basically made a living, drive around town collecting scrap metal, you know. And if the owner wants to give it to them, that's one thing, it deserves to give. But when they're digging through your trash, or on the side of your house at night, it's just something that shouldn't be going on around here. If you guys want to start combating the homelessness and, you know, transience in this town, start by cracking down on them. You know, little things like that, they add up to big things. And when you start cracking down on all things like that, I think it makes a big difference. That's all I have.
So I'd be happy to respond to the first issue with regard to the ordinance that was tabled at the last meeting regarding the issue of sleeping in public places. The city does have an existing ordinance right now that prohibits sleeping in public places. And the ordinance that was tabled at the last council meeting makes certain revisions to that ordinance primarily to remove language about loitering because municipalities are not able to have local ordinances prohibiting loitering per se. Those types of ordinances have been found unconstitutional by courts throughout the country. So when that ordinance was brought forward, we determined that the existing provisions dealing with sleeping in public places needed a couple of housekeeping items taken care of. In the meantime, a decision came down out of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is out West, where a case was brought by six homeless individuals against Boise, Idaho, which had similar ordinance that prevented sleeping in public places. And the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals found the ordinance to be unconstitutional and that it violated the homeless individuals' rights to, it was, they found it to be... rights to, it was, they found it to be cruel and unusual punishment, because the homeless individuals had no place else to go. So, based on this recent decision, which although it isn't binding on the City of Asbury Park, given where we're located on the East Coast, a different area of the country, nevertheless is something that caused us to pause and take, and take another look at the provisions that we have dealing with sleeping in public places. And we do intend to revise the ordinance in certain respects and then bring it forward at a future meeting, but we are mindful of the recent decision that came down, and trying to ensure that whatever ordinance we bring forward before the council will pass constitutional muster.
Fair enough. And the other two I brought up, is that something that's on the books, you guys off the top of your head, or is that...
Digging through trash, Michael.
Digging through trash is legal if it's on public property, as long as someone steps onto a security area, like your porch or behind your house, that is considered trespassing. But if it's out to be collected, it is public, and anyone can go for...
What about couches on front porches?
Couches on front porches would be a property maintenance code issue. They're throughout the city. We even force them if they become stackable, because then it's a safety hazard. But if there's a porch with a couch with a porch on it, I'm sorry, couch, porch with a couch on it, we haven't, there's no regulation on it.
I went to school in New Brunswick, and they had a regulation, because we put our couch on the front porch on the first nice day of the year, and the cops would come down the street, put it out, tell them what to put them in. So, there's cities that have that regulation. There shouldn't be indoor furniture on someone's exterior of their house. Is that something you guys can look into and maybe, you know, explore? I mean, it's just...
You can certainly look into it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And just one last note on the ordinance regarding sleeping in public places. The council at their work session went through, run through the agenda in general, and it is the council's intention to table that once again, because we're still working on it. Just, that's that way.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pam Lamberton, 321 Sunset Avenue. Short-term rentals, I understand that the council cannot speak about them right now due to pending litigation, the question on the ballot coming up, but there seems to be a lot of misinformation, and I was wondering who I could go to to get answers on the interpretation of the existing code. That's number one. Number two, the flooding that occurred last night, that was exciting. A little, a little thing we could do maybe is to put our leaves in leaf bags instead of just piling them in the street. It seems to work in other cities, because it just, it doesn't clog up the drains, they stay in the bag, even though the bags seem to disintegrate, the leaves stay in the bags. Also, it would prevent the leaves from piling up in the bike lanes, which is very dangerous, and in parking spaces. Right now, if I read the calendar correctly, leaf bags are optional, but I would urge the council to make them mandatory. Just a suggestion, when you do matters on the workshop agenda, you do matters from City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, could you put them on the regular agenda? There seem to be more people here for the regular meeting when you're making those interesting announcements than there are at the workshop meeting, and I was wondering if that's, if it's not a point of law, if you could just move that section of the workshop agenda to the regular agenda. And I have a question about the part, the bond issue tonight, the parking utility. Doesn't the parking utility have a lot of money? Why would they be bonding something? That's it.
Let's take the last one first, since it's an easy one.
So they could be done this year. There's no budget appropriation for that amount of money.
Oh.
So what the plan is, is we authorize the issuance, we don't actually have to issue it for a year legally. We're getting paid off in January, it's budget. It's just a technical, because it wasn't in the budget. Leaf bags, we've had that discussion internally a couple times. It's, no one has ever made a decision on it. We'll bring it up again internally to try and do something with the council, but it's been hit or miss if it should be done. The flooding last night, four point three inches of rain, give or take, in three hours, chaos. Yeah, it's just pure chaos. No one around the state was able to handle that, as you obviously saw. We were lucky. Our infrastructure, under the MS four permit, we inspect our catch bases once a year. They're cleaned out sixty percent, seventy-five percent are cleaned out annually. And anytime we know that there's going to be a significant rainfall, we hit the big ones. But this rainstorm, whatever, we were not surprised, it was horrible. And the short-term rental in existing code, there's a case out of Belmar that states that the state, the valid question statement has to be generic, and you can't have anything that would sway like, oh...
I didn't hear what it was.
Okay, I was...
[laughing]
So, because Belmar had proposed something like, we don't like this, don't vote for it, which obviously was wrong. The short-term rental, there's no litigation, so if you have questions, you can ask. We've done a policy analysis of it's, if it's submitted to us the questions, email to make, so we can answer it at the next meeting, so we can do some prayer for it.
Okay.
I just ended up telling what Michael said, there was litigation that was filed after the council adopted its ordinance, following the submission of the petition by the group that had proposed its own ordinance, but that litigation was dismissed. The court found that the council was within its rights to adopt the ordinance that it adopted. However, under the law, dealing with an issue of referendum, because the other ordinance had been submitted to council and was not approved by council, it automatically has to go on the ballot. So there is obviously a valid question, among others, dealing with the short-term rental issue, and there is no prohibition of council being able to discuss the short-term rentals or what their position is on it. And, you know, you have to vote us in November. As to the way the question is written on the ballot, Michael is correct, that there was a recent decision dealing with an ordinance that went to referendum in Belmar, where the question was phrased in a certain way on the ballot, with the interpretive statement, where the court determined that the way the interpretive statement was written, that it was slanted, or could have influenced the voters. So we had to be extremely careful anyhow that interpretive question was written, and it does require the voters to educate themselves as to what the two ordinances entail, because the question itself, the interpretive statement, don't really get into the details, because once you get into the details, it's extremely hard, given the limitations that are present with what you can put on the ballot when people go into voting. And no matter which side you're on for either ordinance, if you try to encapsulate that in some kind of interpretive statement, inevitably, one of the two sides would have said, you left this out, or you left that out. You're trying to influence the voters by saying this and not saying that. So the interpretive statement is very generic, so it will require voters to educate themselves as to the differences between the two, and the voters will make that determination on Election Day.
Thank you, but I meant an interpretation of the existing code about whether or not you're allowed to short-term rent a single bedroom in your home under certain...
Right, so, so, yeah, so if you, like the City Manager said, if you have...
Right.
Specific questions, email him, and he will answer them.
I will do that. I also forgot, 1500 Springwood Avenue and Bangs Avenue. Can you look at the flooding issue there?
Yes.
Hi, John Weber, I'm from Bradley Beach, speaking on behalf of the Surf Rider Foundation, and it's nice to be on this side of the dais. The See Here Now Festival is coming to town this weekend. I see some heads nodding, I hope you're all ready. And I just want you to know that the festival's going through great lengths to hopefully minimize waste, especially single-use plastic waste, and Surf Rider Foundation is involved in hopefully dealing with all that waste. They're running a program called Rock and Recycle, where, you know, the audience, people there at the festival, they'll be rewarded. It might be a t-shirt, don't quote me on that, it might be something else, but, you know, for bringing back a bag of like, you know, bottles, like if they fill this bag with recyclable bottles, and we're going to give you something. And that's really what Surf Rider Foundation volunteers are going to be doing. They're going to have water bottle filling stations, so the festival's going to great lengths to really minimize waste, which I think is fantastic. And hopefully, if we do our job, it's going to make the city's job even easier. There'll be less waste, there'll be lots of already separated recyclables, and that should make life easier for the town. So, and just more broadly, to speak on plastics, I know you tabled it, if you happen to revisit the issue of plastic bags, banning plastic, thin plastic bags, and putting a fee on paper bags and other bags is really the way to go. You let the merchant keep the fee, that's what's best, that's what we did in Bradley Beach, so. And then I'll come back to talk about balloons later, but thanks.
Can I have a motion to close the public portion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All move. Move on to minutes, we have three sets of minutes, executive session of September 12, workshop session of September 12, and regular minutes of September 12. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Moore, or Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Sorry.
I just got demoted.
We're on to the consent agenda, wow. We have only three resolutions. We have Resolutions 2018-343, Resolution approving special event applications, Resolution 2018-344, which is a resolution to credit sewer account for sixteen for Avenue, Fourth Avenue. And then we have the add-on resolution, which is 2018-349, which is authorizing installation of rainbow crosswalk. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Move it.
Move it. Second.
Comments or anything, no, never mind. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to regular agenda, Resolution 2018-345, Resolution approving payment of bills. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-346, authorizing the execution of Addendum B to use and license agreement with SHN Festivals LLC concerning a live culture music and art festival to be held in the designated portion of the City of Asbury Park's waterfront area from September 28, 2018 through September 30, 2018. Can I have a motion to adopt, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-347, Resolution amending the meter parking requirements for the waterfront area of the city effective during the See Here Now Festival. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, or Mayor Moore, sorry.
Yes.
Resolution 2018-348, Resolution awarding contract of installation of playground equipment. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinances introduction. The first one's ordinance 2018-37. Can I have a motion to table this ordinance, please?
Move to table.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We'll hear this on October 10, 2018. Ordinance 2018-45, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Three, drug-free zones surrounding public housing facilities, parks, and public buildings of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Can I have a motion to introduce this ordinance, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for October 24, 2018. We're on now to public hearings. Ordinances, second reading. Ordinance 2018-21, can I have a motion to table, please?
Move to table.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Next meeting is scheduled for October 10, 2018. Ordinance 2018-34, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Twenty, Health Regulations by Adding Twenty-eight dash five, Intentional Release of Balloons of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Can I have a motion to open this to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Anybody like to be heard?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Helen Henderson. I'm from Lacey Township. I am here tonight representing the American Literal Society. I'd just like to say a few words in support of your ordinance tonight. When balloons fall back to earth, frequently, they enter our waterways, where they pose an often enticing danger to any wildlife that encounters them. Sea turtles, birds often mistake balloons as food, and can also become entangled in the attached ribbons. When animals swallow balloons, they can block their intestinal tract and lead to starvation. We know that awareness is growing about banning these intentional balloon releases. I can tell you that there are several states that are, already have banned them, California, Connecticut, Florida, Tennessee, and Virginia, and we're hoping to add New Jersey to that list very soon, as well as some very large major cities. And my count, including Asbury Park, tonight brings the state municipalities in New Jersey up to a number of sixteen. The American Literal Society cares very much about keeping our waterways clean. We fully support this ordinance, and we thank you for putting it forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the great work your organization does.
I just want to echo that again, John Weber from Bradley Beach. Yes, Surf Rider Foundation, we applaud you for doing this, joining those fifteen other towns in New Jersey that have already done it. As Helen said, there is state legislation, I can't say it's actually moving anywhere fast, so if you do this tonight, you will be ahead of the curve if it ever becomes the law. And, you know, we did this in Bradley, and it just occurs to me, you approve all sorts of special events, you know, people want to have their walk, or their fundraiser, or their whatever, on your boardwalk, because it's beautiful, and you would just be, you know, shocked if you found out that, oh, as part of that, they released, you know, whatever, a thousand balloons or something. So this prevents it, so good for you guys. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
Can I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2018-34?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-35, an ordinance amending and supplementing Section 26 slash four, Retirement Benefits, Chapter Twenty-six, Personnel Policies of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to open this to the public?
Move it.
Second.
Anybody like to be heard? Motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
Can I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2018-35?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-36, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Three, Entitled Police Regulations of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park. New Jersey, in order to establish a new section, they're known as Section Three dash ten, entitled Bagging and Panhandling. Can I have a motion to open this to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Anybody like to be heard?
Motion to close?
No.
I'm sorry.
I don't appreciate it, First Avenue. I just, I can't stress how important this is. You know, I get panhandled mowing my lawn, shoveling snow, eating dinner on Cookman Avenue. It's worse than, I'm telling you, I work in New York City, it's worse than there. I don't get approached there. And it's just people coming on trains and buses to our town to just really abuse it, and it's not fair. It's not Asbury Park people, it's other towns, and they say, hey, there's a free ride over there, let's go. So, we need to kind of make a, you know, the image that we're not going to put up with that in this town. I think it's extremely important, and this is the first step in the direction of trying to get rid of this. I'm sick and tired of seeing packs of men with backpacks rolling luggage walk around. It's unsettling, it is what it is. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2018-36?
Move it.
Have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-38, an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending and supplementing Chapter Seven of the Code of the City of Asbury Park Regarding Traffic and Parking Regulations. Can I have a motion to open this, ordinance to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Anybody like to be heard? Motion to close?
Second.
Second.
Have a motion to adopt ordinance 2018-38?
Move it. Second.[1749.12]
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?[1687.28]